Good evening. I would like to call to order the June 8, 2015 Belbrook City Council meeting. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sweller?
Here.
And Mayor Baird.
Here. Form of approval, regular city council meeting minutes of May 11, 2015. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of the last meeting?
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements and special guests. One, I'd just like to start, we did have an executive session prior to this meeting. We did not have a work session, so we did open and close that prior to our seven o'clock regular meeting. I have no mayor's announcements this evening, so we'll move on to public hearing of ordinances. Ordinance number 2015-5. And that's Mrs. Middlestetter.
Yeah.
I went too quick, didn't I?
You did. I was still reading. 2015-. I'm in resolution. Where's the ordinance? Ordinance 2015-5 and ordinance repealing Chapter 1220 Planning Board of the Belbrook Municipal Code, whereas the City of Belbrook periodically reviews the Belbrook Municipal Code, and whereas Chapter 1220 Planning Board was determined to be in conflict with Section 8.03 of the Charter, and whereas the City desires to repeal Chapter 1220 Planning Board in its entirety. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains, Section 1, the Chapter 1220 Planning Board of the Belbrook Municipal Code, a copy of which is attached hereto, be deleted in its entirety. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. Mark.
Yes, this ordinance is to repeal a section of the code that was originally adopted in 1977, where the members of the Planning Board were actually elected to their positions rather than appointed by city council. In 1987, the Charter was changed back to make those appointed positions, however, this section of the code was not changed to match that. So this action will put the municipal code in line with the Charter on this matter.
Do we have any questions? I think that's pretty straightforward, but this is a public hearing, so if there's any questions on council. Seeing none, this is a public hearing. I see two people in our audience, and Louis, do you have any? Okay. Seeing none, I call this public hearing closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2015-5?
I move to approve ordinance 2015-5.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to approve ordinance number 2015-5 repealing Chapter 1220 Planning Board of the Belbrook Municipal Code, seconded by Mr. Martin. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird.
Yes. Moving on, ordinance number 2015-6. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2015-6, an ordinance amending Chapter 1024 subdivision regulations of the Belbrook Municipal Code and adopting revised City of Belbrook subdivision regulations. Whereas the City of Belbrook has performed a comprehensive review of the existing subdivision regulations, and whereas the City last amended the subdivision regulations in 1989, and whereas the City now, the City desires to amend Chapter 1024 subdivision regulations and to adopt the revised subdivision regulations. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains, Section 1, that the following amendment to Chapter 1224 of the Belbrook Municipal Code be approved with deletion shown by brackets and strike through in addition shown by italics and underline. 1224.01 fee is hereby amended as follows. The following fees are required under the subdivision regulations for the plating of land in the City. A preliminary filing fee, $200 plus $25 per acre. B fee, $250 plus 25 per acre. C lot split, lot combination fee, $50. D inspection fee. Prior to approval by the Planning Board of a final plat and construction plans, a subdivision shall provide a cash bond in the amount of 4% of the estimated cost of the public improvements, streets, curbs, sidewalks, storm sewers, and water lines to the finance office. The subdivision's engineer of record shall provide an estimate as to the quantities and prices, and if any discrepancy exists between the subdivision and the city engineer's estimate, the inspection deposit will be based on the city's engineer's estimate. E inspection costs. Inspection costs and the cost of subdivision plan review performed under the contract by the City shall be charged against the 4% deposit. Any portion of the deposit not used shall be returned to the developer at the time the performance bond or letter of credit is released. However, if funds deposited at the time of filing are not sufficient to cover all inspection costs, additional inspection fees shall be required when needed at the discretion of the city manager. F water and sewage connection fees. All fees for connection to the city water system shall be established in Chapter 1042 of the Belbrook Municipal Code. All fees for connection to the sanitary sewer system shall be set by the Green County Department of Sanitary Engineering and paid to that agency. G failure to pay filing fees. If a filing fee is not paid prior to the initiation of construction, a penalty of 50% of the filing fee shall be added to the fees listed in this section if the project is in full compliance with the zoning code. Section 2, that the revised subdivision regulations attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference are hereby adopted. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect August 1, 2015.
Mark.
Yes, this ordinance is a result of a comprehensive review of our subdivision regulations. Those subdivision regulations were last updated in 1989. In addition to that, and that document is what is attached, we also have changed some of the filing fees for plating within the city and made some of the language consistent between our zoning code and our subdivision regulations. This document, the subdivision regulations are what we use when somebody comes in to develop something or submit a plan. These are what delineates what the roads need to look like, what the water system, all those things are spelled out in here very clearly. And I think this is a thorough update that has been reviewed not only by our staff here but by the contract engineer that the City uses too.
And I know we went over this, essentially, while it's $200 increase, it's also less than acreage per acreage.
Right, it was just a little easier way to calculate it, is what it was.
Yeah, boiled down to. Does anyone on council have any questions? This is, once again, a public hearing. Does anyone in our small audience have any questions this evening? Seeing none, I move this public hearing is closed. I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2015-6.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2015-6.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
A motion by Mr. Edwards to approve ordinance number 2015-6 amending Chapter 1224 subdivision regulations of the Belbrook Municipal Code, seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird.
Yes. Moving on, ordinance number 2015-7. Mr. Martin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2015-7, an ordinance amending Chapter 1226 Erosion Control, Sediment Abatement, and Stormwater Management of the Belbrook Municipal Code to establish fees. Whereas the Belbrook Municipal Code includes Chapter 1226 Erosion Control, Sediment Abatement, and Stormwater Management, establishing standards, principles, and procedures for the regulation of construction and development-related earth-disturbing activities that cause or may cause adverse water resource impacts resulting from stormwater runoff and soil erosion, and whereas Chapter 1226 has been reviewed by staff and an amendment is needed to include fees for permits issued under this chapter. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains, Section 1, that the following amendments to Chapter 1226 of the Belbrook Municipal Code be approved with deletion shown by brackets and strike through in addition shown by italics and underline. 1226.02 intent and scope is hereby amended as follows. Section J, schedule of fees. The City of Belbrook shall establish a schedule of fees, charges, expenses, and collection procedures for same and other matters pertaining to these regulations. Until all applicable fees, charges, and expenses have been paid in full, no action shall be taken on any application or appeal. The following fees are required under the Erosion Control, Sediment Abatement, and Stormwater Management Regulations. Fill, grade, and excavation permit fee will be set at $100 plus $10 per acre. Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Slogaher.
Yes, again, in the review of Chapter 12, as you can tell, of the municipal code, we determined that there were some fees that were in the code and also in the zoning code, and they weren't consistent between the two. These fees had been updated previously in the zoning code. We wanted to make them consistent between everything. So basically, what this does is make the language between each of the code sections consistent and make sure that we're applying them the same for each time we have this type of permit.
Great. Does anyone on council have any questions? Once again, this is a public hearing. Seeing none, does anyone in our audience have any questions? Seeing none, I move this public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2015-7?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
A motion by Mr. Martin to approve ordinance number 2015-7 amending Chapter 1226 Erosion Control, Sediment Abatement, and Stormwater Management of the Belbrook Municipal Code to establish fees, seconded by Mr. Sweller. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird.
Yes. One more public hearing of ordinances this evening, ordinance number 2015-8. Mrs. Seager-Lawson.
Ordinance number 2015-8, an ordinance amending Chapter 1244 zoning permits and certificates of the Belbrook Municipal Code. Whereas the Belbrook Municipal Code includes Chapter 1244 zoning permits and certificates, establishing the fees for zoning permits and certificates, and whereas Chapter 1244 has been reviewed by staff, an amendment is needed to update the fees charged for permits and certificates issued under this chapter. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains, Section 1, that the following amendments to Chapter 1244 of the Belbrook Municipal Code be approved with deletion shown by brackets and strike through in addition shown by italics and underline. Section 1244.01, application fees, is hereby amended as follows. Section A, there's a sentence that's deleted, it formerly read, "If the permit or certificate is not granted, 75% of the fee will be paid with the general fund." Section B, the zoning permit for signs went from $25 to $50, and we've added a zoning permit for temporary sign for occurrence at $25. Section 8, some of the references to ordinances that were passed in 1970, as references were deleted. Section C, the following fees and charges will be paid into the general fund or non-refundable either in whole or in part. We've changed the application for variance from $35 to $100. We've deleted a zoning code book fee of $15, subdivision regulation fee of $10, standard construction drawing of $5, and comprehensive plan book for $20. All those things, I think, are obsolete. Section D, if a permit is not obtained or a fee is not paid prior to the initiation of construction, a penalty of 50% of the permit fee or filing fee shall be added to the fees listed in this section if the project is in full compliance with the zoning code. Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Yes, in 2012, the zoning code was modified, and these fees were actually increased at that point, and they're included in the zoning code. In reviewing the municipal code, we found this section hadn't been updated in coordination with that, so we've gone back through and made this section consistent with the zoning code. So the variance fee is probably the biggest one that increased from 35 to 100. That's been in place since 2012, and the zoning permit for temporary sign has also been in place since 2012. We did, at the end of this, eliminate those charges for those four items, primarily because those are available electronically. There's not really a cost to us to provide those, so there's no need to have those anymore. So with this, again, everything will be consistent among our various sections of code for what we charge and the fees that we have.
Does anyone on council have any questions regarding ordinance number 2015-8?
No, Mayor.
No.
Once again, this is a public hearing. Does anyone from our audience have anything to say? Or any questions? Seeing none, I move this public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2015-8?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2015-8.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
A motion by Mrs. Seager-Lawson to approve ordinance number 2015-8 amending Chapter 1244 zoning permits and certificates of the Belbrook Municipal Code, seconded by Mrs. Middlestetter. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird.
Yes. We have one introduction of an ordinance this evening, ordinance number 2015-9. Mr. Sweller?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2015-9, an ordinance authorizing the city manager/finance director to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2016 to the Green County Auditor. The City of Belbrook hereby ordains, Section 1, that the tax budget for fiscal year 2016 as attached hereto be approved for submission to the Green County Auditor to guarantee the City's eligibility for allocation of local government funds in 2016. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. Essentially, these are property tax-supported funds, and their budget request is $2,991,000, of which $488,000 is inside the 10 mil limitation and $2,503,000 outside the 10 mil limitation. This is a recurring item we do each year, and the couple pages I read are followed by a number of different supporting exhibits. Anything else to add to it, Mark?
No, this is, we'll have the public hearing on this at the July meeting. This is a requirement of the Ohio Revised Code, and the county auditor requires us to do this. Some places use this as their budget document. We really go through that a little bit later in the year when we get a little bit more detailed than this, but this is the, sort of the kickoff, but estimates the property taxes we'll be collecting in 2016 based on the levies as they are existing today.
Any questions on council? This is just an introduction. We'll hear more about it in July. May I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2015-9?
Mayor, I'd like to move for the introduction of ordinance 2015-9.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
A motion by Mr. Sweller to introduce ordinance number 2015-9 authorizing the city manager/finance director to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2016 to the Green County Auditor, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird.
Yes. Resolutions, I believe we have four this evening. We'll start with Resolution number 2015-0. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2015-0 is the resolution approving an agreement for the employment of the municipal attorney, whereas Section 7.09 of the Belbrook City Charter requires the appointment of the municipal attorney, and whereas Patricia Campbell is an attorney at law, admitted to practice of law in the state of Ohio, and is in good professional standing, and whereas Patricia Campbell has an office located in the City of Belbrook, and whereas the City's current agreement with Patricia Campbell will expire on June 30, 2015. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that the attached two-year agreement for the employment of Patricia Campbell as municipal attorney for the City of Belbrook effective July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2017, is hereby approved. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, Ms. Campbell is finishing up her first year as our municipal attorney. We have been very satisfied with the services that she's provided to us. Her offices are just down the street here from us. She's been very responsive to our needs, and actually, we've turned to her on quite a few different issues that maybe in the past we had to do unto ourselves and scramble to find some answers. So she's been a very valuable addition to us. What's before you is a two-year agreement rather than just a one-year agreement, but the rate of compensation remains the same. There are exit provisions should we want to, but everything, we are very satisfied with the services she's been providing to us.
Any questions on council or comments?
That's a reasonable rate.
A very, very...
Yeah.
I know in our two worlds, I look at that and go, oh my gosh.
Wow, yeah.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2015-0?
Yes, may I move to adopt Resolution 2015-0?
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
A motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to adopt Resolution number 2015-0, approving an agreement for the employment of the municipal attorney, seconded by Mr. Martin. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird.
Yes. Moving on, Resolution number 2015-P. Mrs. Seager-Lawson.
Resolution number 2015-P, a resolution declaring specific equipment no longer needed by the City of Belbrook as surplus property and authorizing the city manager to dispose of said surplus property. Whereas the City of Belbrook desires to maintain adequate equipment to be used by its personnel, and whereas equipment no longer needed for use by city personnel may be declared as surplus property per Chapter 230 of the Belbrook Municipal Code. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that the following equipment is hereby declared as surplus property. A 1992 International Cab and Chassis lists the serial number with plow and spreader. Section 2, that the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to dispose of said property in accordance with Chapter 230 of the Belbrook Municipal Code. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, earlier this year, council authorized the purchase of a new dump truck. We have three of these larger dump trucks with plows and spreaders on them. Obviously, this is the oldest one, being almost 23 years old, so we have certainly got our use out of that. With the purchase of another, with the new one, we will keep three. This one we'll sell. We'll put another one as more of the reserve unit that we only bring out in the really heavy snow for events like that. We will put this up on govdeals.com, online auction. We've had pretty good success with that in selling our vehicles. I imagine we'll probably get a fair amount of money for this just because these type of vehicles are hard to come by, and if it's in good shape, it's running those things, I think we'll get some good money for that.
Mark, does this truck include the dump bed on it as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Has there any thought about timing of this? I mean, would you get more money if you waited until it's closer to like the snowplow season when somebody stops doing landscaping and decides to snowplow?
You know, we could look at that, but sometimes, you know, somebody's gonna probably wanna...
Get it now, put their logo on it.
Summer, summertime's probably a little bit better for construction.
That's true.
Yeah, so it just depends. I mean, we've, we can look and see if there's any up there right now and how many there are, and things like that, and maybe try to time it that way, but somebody may wanna have it so that they can have it prepared for their use when they need it.
Yeah, it probably won't be used for a snowplow, probably be used for more construction purposes and hauling dirt and stuff, I would think.
Because it's, the reason we declare it surplus is because it's at the point where it's requiring too much maintenance to do the type of work that we need it to do.
Right.
But it's suitable for lighter or less dren-...
Right, and somebody who maybe can do the repairs themselves and things like that, it makes sense for them to have, but for the plowing of the streets and that, it's not suitable for that anymore.
Okay.
Any...
Mark, how's the other truck coming along? You said it was gonna be a while.
It's gonna be a while. We have not taken delivery of the chassis yet. We have ordered the chassis, and I think we are going to get that by mid to late summer. Once we get it, then we have to take it up to the place to put all the accessories on, the dump bed and everything else, so we're still waiting for the chassis, but we're confident that we'll get, we haven't heard anything where that's been delayed to the point that we can't sell this vehicle.
Okay.
Any other questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2015-P?
On the adoption of Resolution number 2015-P.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
A motion by Mrs. Seager-Lawson to adopt Resolution number 2015-P, declaring specific equipment no longer needed by the City of Belbrook as surplus property and authorizing the city manager to dispose of said surplus property, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird.
Yes. Moving on, Resolution 2015-Q. Mr. Greenwood?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 215-Q, a resolution authorizing the city manager to participate in a contract with the Department of Administrative Services, Office of State, purchasing for the purchase of a medic unit for the City of Belbrook, whereas Section 240.03 of the municipal code allows the City to purchase goods and services through a cooperative arrangement with another government entity, and whereas the Department of Administration Services, Office of State Purchasing, has entered into a contract with Burgess Hurst and Ambulance Sales Incorporated of Loudenville, Ohio, for the purchase of certain vehicles in accordance with Section 125.04 of the Ohio Revised Code. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that the city manager be authorized to participate in a contract with Burgess Hurst and Ambulance Services for the purchase of the following vehicle for the Belbrook Fire Department. 1, 2015 McCoy Miller 170 model mounted on a Ford E450 V10 gasoline chassis with accessories for a gross price of $147,145. Section 2, that the City of Belbrook directly pays a vendor for said equipment under state contract. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Yes, in the 2015 budget, we included $150,000 to replace a medic. The City operates three medics. We have two frontline medics, and then we have one reserve unit. This will replace one of the reserve units. The two older units, one is a 2000 model and one is a 2004 model. We're actually going to take the 2004 model and sell it. At a future point, you'll see that go up for surplus just because of the maintenance issues we've had over time, but the older model is actually the one that is in better shape than the 2004. But what this will give us is our two frontline medics will be relatively new, 2011 and 2015. The one difference that we're going with this one is we're going to a gas-powered chassis instead of a diesel-powered chassis. We've had some issues over the year, and I think because of the amount that we run them, a gas-powered makes a little bit more sense. We're not doing a lot of highway miles or anything like that, so it makes a little bit more sense to go to the gas-powered chassis. The total cost, gross cost, is $147,145. There's actually a $5,300 rebate on the chassis that should reduce that number down to just over $141,000, so we're under budget, and we should be able to get this new medic here by the end of the year, have it in place and in service.
Any questions on council?
Mark, I know back when we bought a new fire truck, you know, it was a fairly involved look at requirements and comparing of models and, you know, features and so forth. I'm assuming the fire department kinda did the same thing along those lines for this medic?
Yes, they had a committee. They consisted of at least one of the captains and some of the people that use it. They looked at all the different options. They looked at, obviously, we have a relatively new one, so they know from the same manufacturer, so they know some of the pros and cons of that, but beyond that, they looked at the features, and there's a, probably a 60-page document here with all the features. here with all the features. If you, if you want, can't sleep tonight, you wanna see what they all are?
Yeah.
They're all in here. But, but you know, they spent a lot of time and effort to go through and make sure everything from what type of lights are on there, the doors, whether, how they lock, everything is all specked out in there. And they did spend a lot of time before the recommendation came to me and then on to you for the purchase of this vehicle.
Just make sure they don't order a hearse. That'd be bad.
Yeah, right, yeah. They order those. They say both. The ambulance, not the hearse, yeah.
Okay, John. Any other questions regarding our new ambulance? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2015 dash Q.
So move.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Greenwood to adopt Resolution number 2015 dash Q, authorizing the city manager to participate in a contract with the Department of Administrative Services, Office of State Purchasing, for the purchase of a medic unit for the City of Belbrook. Mr. Martin seconded. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird?
Yes. One last resolution this evening, Resolution 2015 dash R. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. 2015 dash R, a resolution expressing the city's intent to negotiate jointly with other cities in the region for one price schedule under which electric light services shall be furnished to the residents of the city for the purpose of street lighting. Whereas the city is currently under contract with Miami Valley Lighting LLC, MVL, and DPL Energy Resources, Inc., DPLE, for the provision of street lighting and whereas the current contract expires on or about December 31, 2015. And whereas, Ohio Revised Code, Section 743.28 Subsection B, allows two or more municipal corporations to negotiate one price schedule under which an electric light company shall furnish its services to the residents of the municipal corporations. And whereas, the city council has determined that it would be in the best interest of the city to negotiate jointly with other cities in the region on one price schedule for the provision of electric light services to the residents of the city for the purposes of street lighting. And whereas, the city is authorized as a charter municipality to exercise all powers of local self-government. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 743.28 Subsection B, the City of Belbrook hereby expresses its intent to negotiate jointly with other cities in the region on one price schedule under which electric light services shall be furnished to the residents of the city for the purpose of street lighting. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, as the resolution states, we are part of a joint negotiating process for our street lighting. The City of Belbrook spends about $11,000 annually for street lighting, so we're a relatively small player in this, this market. So this probably benefits us as much as anybody to join in with the Dayton's and Kettering's and Centerville's and Miami'sburgs of the world that have far more streetlights than we do, and we get the benefit of the, the larger group of streetlights there. So this was a five-year contract that is expiring at the end of this year. They're going to begin the negotiation process here. They need this resolution authorizing that we can participate in that. Assuming they come to an agreement, there'll be a resolution later this year authorizing the signing of the actual contract. I know one of the topics that will be included in this negotiation will be LED streetlights and the replacement of some of the, the current streetlights with LED lights. I know that was talked about the last time. I think technology has changed some, and that will probably be included in here. I'm not to what, sure to what extent or the timing of that, but it'll be included in this process.
So this is just actually giving permission to negotiate, so, and this is a resolution? Is there any other questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2015 dash R.
So move, Mayor.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
A motion by Mr. Martin to adopt Resolution number 2015 dash R, expressing the city's intent to negotiate jointly with other cities in the region on one price schedule with electric light services to be furnished to the residents of the city for the purpose of street lighting. Seconded by Mr. Sweller. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
abstained.
Okay. And Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, that is it for resolutions this evening. We do have a city manager's report.
Yes, couple items this evening. First, Sugar Creek Township is having a rezoning of the land that is behind Walmart and Staples. There is some acreage there. We've talked about this before, but the developer has submitted another plan for apartments on the southern portion of that parcel. So like I said, this is the land just to the east of Walmart and Staples and to the west of our residents that live on Bloodsoe Drive there, where the water tower is there. So they are having a, their zoning commission is having a hearing tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at Sugar Creek Township offices. So if anyone is interested in that, the benefit to the city with this is those 203 apartment units will be served by our water. This is the one that we negotiated with the county. We'll split some of that revenue with the county, depending on where the development actually occurs. But now that that's in place, we don't have to worry about who's going to provide the water. We will be providing the water to that area regardless of how it develops. So, but that public hearing is tomorrow night at 7:00 at the township, if anyone is interested in attending that. Our water main project, the contractor should be starting here in the next week or so. That's a project here in the downtown area. You'll likely see some activity coming, they're going to come through and paint some markings where the, where the water main's actually going to go in. Then they'll come back out and saw cut that to mark that, and then they'll come out and start excavating that. So most of the businesses in that area, the property are owned by Mr. Coe. He's been involved in this process from the beginning. Within the last couple of weeks, we've gone out and notified all the business owners in that area, too, that this project is going to be going on. The, the contract calls for it to be completed by August 17, which is the day before school starts. So this should be done. It's a relatively straightforward project, but it will impact a lot of those businesses as they go through there. Fortunately, there's a number of different ways in and out of the plaza there, so if the one is blocked off, you'll just have to find another way in or out of there. But we should be able to accommodate most of that through this period of time. And then there will be work once it comes up through Main Street. We'll have that down to one lane during the day. They'll be flagging that, that it will not be closed completely, but it'll be down to one lane. So there'll be some delays there, I'm sure, but the contractor has assured us they'll do the best to get it done quickly and efficiently. Prosecution, historically, at this meeting, we've had a contract adopted for prosecution services with Ron Lewis. This year, there's a little wrinkle that we're not able to have that before you tonight, so it may take some action in the future. There are some things going on with the City of Xenia and their law department that they're trying to iron out how this is going to occur in the future. So there's not a contract that we can actually enter into at this point. But it's something that we'll either likely discuss at the July meeting. It may be something that I'll ask for you to ratify my action in signing a contract. We historically have not done that a lot, but the charter does allow that to happen. So just to let you know that we haven't forgotten that that contract is out there, but we're sort of weighing the different options, and a lot of it is going to depend on the actions of the City of Xenia here in the next few weeks and, and what they, what they do before we can come up with a final contract on that. In your packet, I gave you another proposal for a logo from a different company. Prices were comparable to the first proposal that we had, a little bit less. This firm is Schlegel Creative. They are out of Washington Township. They've done a lot of work for different municipalities and governments. They've done Vandelia's, Miami'sburgs, the Miami Conservancy District, Franklin's. So I don't know if you had a chance to look at that and what your thoughts are, or we can, we can talk about that at a further, further time if anyone has any questions or comments on that.
Mark, I would price it, yes, we just check references on this one, the other we had both, and then we can have kind of a side-by-side comparison.
Yeah, we probably just need to do a quick work session on it, look at both of them and have a discussion. It's probably, I think everyone got it in their email, so.
Well, we'll just, if you can take a look at it, and I've already checked some of the references on this one. Obviously, they're, they've, they've done more work for local governments, so I think that makes it a little easier to, I think they understand maybe a little bit more of the climate that we're dealing with and things like that. So, but I will do that, and maybe if we have a work session prior to the next meeting, we can, we can talk about that.
Yep.
So, the, also included in your packet was the cost of local government survey. The City of Beaver Creek does a survey, and they put in multiple factors that, of 24 cities and, cities and villages in Green and Montgomery Counties, and they rank them based on the total cost to the residents. Those costs include real estate taxes, city income taxes, school district income taxes, and their annual water and sewer rates. And for the second consecutive year, the City of Belbrook was the lowest of all those 24 cities and villages. So our annual cost is $3,448.44. So obviously, within that, that's just not the cost of the city government, but that includes schools and all the other taxes, property taxes that people pay. The one thing that I know I hear on a, on a fairly regular basis is that our property taxes are the highest in Green County. And although that's true, part of the reason for that is of the other communities in Green County that have lower property taxes, most of them have a school district income tax.
Right.
And that certainly offsets the lower property taxes. So when you look at the, the property taxes out of the 24, we're the 17th out of those 24 in terms of our property taxes. But of the places below us, Farmersville, Yellow Springs, Germantown, Fairborn, Cedarville, and Xenia all have a school district income tax, and that makes their property taxes lower, which would impact us, so.
Total tax.
Total taxes.
Total taxes, right. That's why on the other one, we're the lowest, because our total taxes. And really, I'm gonna, I'm gonna relook at this and plug in a couple of the communities I think are relevant. Sugar Creek Township, obviously, Washington Township, and Springboro are three that aren't included in this. I, just on some rough numbers, Sugar Creek would be the only one that's lower than us. The other thing is, they do this value based on $100,000 home and $50,000 in earned income. Well, there are not many people in Belbrook that are probably only have $50,000 earned income, so as soon as you start ratcheting that up, that will even put us farther below because we're not taxing that earned income. So I think it's positive news. It, it does, the only caveat with this is if you work in a community that has an income tax, you're paying that, too.
Right.
So this is only if you don't pay an income tax to where you work, is really what it is, so. Or if you're retired and don't pay an income tax at all. So I, although I'm, I'm happy with where it puts us, it doesn't tell the story for all of our residents that are working in a community where they're, where they are paying an income tax on top of what they're paying here.
But they'd be paying that regardless.
But if you do compare us strictly in property tax to some of the Montgomery County cities, the straight-up Kettering, Centerville, all those cities, our property taxes are lower.
Yes.
So, you know, everyone will always throw that argument out there, well, their property taxes are lower. Well, no, they're not. And they also have income taxes on top of that, so.
Yeah. So I will...
It's an interesting thing, I really like it.
Yes, I, in fact, I just got the spreadsheet. The Beaver Creek Finance Director is the one who puts this together. He sent me his spreadsheet today, so I can go in and now add some of the other communities on here, just, and I'll update that and get that to you, so you can sort of see where it is. But I think it, it does give an indication that although our property taxes are higher in, for the total cost of services, schools, county, city, we're, we're on the lower end of that. Water and sewer, we're on the lower end of the spectrum there. So I think that's all good news. The last thing I wanted to do, and Mayor and I had a brief conversation, is, is bring up that Sugar Creek Township had their safety services meeting here on May 19, and just sort of give council an update on that, and then we can have any discussion maybe that we want to have with that. They held that, that meeting, and it was intended to sort of review this current status of the Township Fire Department and where they are financially, where they're headed. Obviously, a large component of that is the cornerstone development that has been annexed by the City of Centerville, and where those taxes are going or not going, as the case may be. There was a lot of things that, that came out of that meeting. Couple council members were in attendance for that meeting also, so they can speak to that. But I think the biggest thing that has a direct impact on the city was there was a lot of discussion about a joint fire district. And there's obviously a lot more to forming such a fire district than just the face of, okay, let's go out and form one. If, if you know, our history, we actually had what would be termed a joint fire district back in the 80s. It was a township fire department that, Belbrook was within the township and was served by the Township Fire Department. So a lot of things transpired, and, and we are where we are today with two separate fire departments. But there are a lot of things that, that need to be discussed before we could ever even begin the, the process of, of a joint fire district. And I'm sure that council has questions that need to be answered and things like that before we do. But, but it was something that was certainly played up in the media before and following that meeting. And then, you know, I, I know there's a lot of talk about, during that meeting, about a joint fire district. What would the benefit, benefits be to the township? What would the benefits be to the city? Things of that nature. So it's something that we've talked about in general concepts at previous joint meetings with the Township trustees, but I have a feeling that as we move forward with this, any joint meeting with trustees, this is going to be a major topic that will be discussed. So if you have any thoughts or, or comments on that, we can talk about it, or we can talk about it at a, at a future date, too.
So I, I think, you know, we will require public input at this on, at some point. We can talk about what we personally think now, but we will require, I think, at some points, some public input. I know my personal concerns are always looking at their budget compared to ours. How's this going to improve our public service? What about potential issues with where they're currently standing with the dilley property and all the litigation? All those things are my personal concern now. And, and I, and I think it's up to everyone else to, you know, decide on what their own concerns are, and at some point, we will have to have public input, and we will need to get back to the township, because I, I'm sure they're gonna be requesting us to have some kind of work session on this. So, you know, it's, that's where we're at today. That's, that's sort of my personal view of it. I think there's a lot more moving parts on this, and it's gonna be something that we'll continue to look at, and it'll be interesting at some point, we'll, we'll definitely have to give public input.
So to be clear, we're not on any kind of negotiation about fire districts with anyone at this point, that we've had preliminary discussions, not even preliminary discussions, discussions over the years with township on fire service, and that at some point down the road, you know, discussions might be warranted, I guess, depending on whether or not we feel it's gonna benefit.
They will be requesting, obviously, getting together, and we know that what they're going to probably want to be looking at is the potential of doing something together. And it's not that I'm opposed to it. I think we'll, one, we'll need to get public input, and two, sort of look at those key issues I think we're, we're all aware of.
I think the key is to, to make sure that we're not, if we are going to look at something like that, is to make sure that we're providing adequate service to our residents and not allowing service levels to be degraded and for costs to be increased. So I think that the level of service that we're providing our residents is very good today, and I wouldn't want to make any decisions that would negatively impact...
I, I think some of the implications that were maybe made either at that meeting or in the media is that there were ongoing negotiations or ongoing discussions, and that's, that's not the case. I mean, this has been something that's always been talked about, probably since the fire department split back in the mid 80s, that there's been some people that are trying to figure out how, how you could put it back together. But there's not anything ongoing. It's something that, you know, as, as my job as a city manager, I'll continue to research it and understand so that I can educate council on, if, if you want to pursue a, a joint fire district, what are the, what are the issues that you have to, have to be aware of. But from my perspective, obviously, the, the quality of service is the biggest thing our residents come to expect, and I think we provide an excellent level of service to our residents. And, and then the other issue that, that we face is the, the cornerstone, although we're not a party to that today, and I don't think we want to be a party to that in the future.
Correct.
So I think that's, that's the thing right now, that until that elephant in the room is, is resolved, I, I don't know that that's something that we necessarily want to, want to get involved with. So just something that, I, I agree that this, before we move forward with anything, we'd have a lot of public input, allow people to talk about it, but just to let everyone know sort of where we stand today.
But they haven't yet asked us for a meeting.
They have not asked us for a joint meeting.
They have not asked for a meeting.
No, no. But if they do, I think what I would, assuming that council's fine with it, what I'll tell them is that, you know, until the cornerstone issue is resolved, it's not really worth discussing, because we don't want to be drugged into an issue that right now we're not a part of.
Correct.
And then, you know, some of the other concerns I think are probably a little more obvious is the level of service has to be the same, if not better. If it can get better, I don't know, but it at least has to be the same, and the responsiveness and the professionalism and the things that our fire department brings to the table today has to remain in place, and that's what we have to have.
And I think the other one is, obviously, financials. You know, it needs to be at a fair, you know, we currently run a very tight ship here, and we need to make sure that our residents are getting what they pay for, and that we don't, you know, hopefully have a, keep their, what they're paying at a, where it's at now or less.
Well, yeah, I mean, that goes right back to the cost of local government survey you just told about and how favorable we were. We want to stay there.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. Anything else this evening?
That is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Moving on, committee report. Service?
No report tonight.
Safety?
Yes, Mayor, I made an observation last week, about third June, last Wednesday. I attended one of the community forums put on by the police department. Detective Salyers, or I'm sorry, Sergeant Salyers and Detective Vetter, presentation on the topic of identity theft and how to avoid scams. And it was at the community church. It was very informative. Both these officers were very professional, had a lot of knowledge. We had a lot of participation from the audience, one-to-one. It was very informative, very enjoyable. We have two more coming up in July and August. If you've got some time in the evening, the community church is air-conditioned very well, and it's really a nice place. And the next one, topic's going to be active shooter. You see a lot of that on the news. You never know where it's going to go next. But it's really something, if you would like to kind of make a memory or get some information, it's a good thing to attend. And I'd like to thank those officers and the community church for providing such a nice place to have that, so.
Yep. And I would say the active shooter is if you're in a situation in a school, if you're in any other building, it is to instruct you on how to act if there is a situation. That's what it's about. When you say active shooter, it can be, it can be interpreted different ways, but I want to make it clear on, this is how you would personally act if you were thrown into one of those situations.
Right.
That's all I got, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, finance and audit.
Nothing to report this evening, Mayor.
Community fairs?
Nothing tonight.
Old business. Anyone have any old business this evening? We do have one new business item. Mr. Blockack?
Yes, tonight I'd like a motion to authorize the city to solicit bids for the stormwater improvement project at Vemco Drive and Firebird Drive. If you recall, this is a project that we received Ohio Public Works Commission funding for. That funding for construction actually becomes available July first. The engineer has been putting together the plans here over the past couple of months. They are near completion, so once they are complete, we'll go out to bid and hopefully award that contract. Probably won't be able to by the July meeting, but probably by the August meeting. My hope is that if we can award the contract at the August meeting, we can get the work done prior to the end of the year, prior to the asphalt plants closing in November, is what I would like to get this one. It's a relatively small project in terms of the scope, but it'd be nice to get it done and off the books prior to the end of the year.
Any questions? If not, may I have a motion authorizing the city manager to solicit bids for the stormwater improvement project, Vemco Drive and Firebird?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? For roll call? Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Sweller authorizing the city manager to solicit bids for the stormwater improvement project on Vemco Drive and Firebird Drive. Seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Sweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
And Mayor Baird?
Yes. Open discussion.
Edwards?
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Of course. Mark, I wanted to ask about the resolution on the street lighting, and your mention of LEDs reminded me. I know we had discussed, I think it was maybe two meetings ago.
It was the last meeting, actually.
Last meeting, okay. See how time flies?
Yeah, it does.
About the proposal that we had received for this building and the LED lighting. Where do we stand with that?
Actually, the finance committee is meeting on Wednesday evening at five-thirty. That's one of the topics for that, to look over the financials of that and see if we want to proceed. I've got some revised numbers, actually, because after that meeting, they went back and they looked at the library and the museum, which were not included in the original one.
Okay.
And then they took into account some additional rebates, so the savings are actually greater than what they were before. I wanted to review that with the finance committee, and if they're fine with it, then probably the July meeting, I would come forward with a resolution seeking to enter into a contract with that company.
Okay.
I did contact Carroll High School.
Okay.
I talked to their maintenance person. They're very satisfied with the contractor. I also talked with the superintendent for Vandelia Butler, Mr. Nevin, who actually was here in Belbrook for a number of years, is a, I don't.
Some, I know the name, but I can't.
He was, I don't know if he was a principal, but he started teaching here. Maybe he was some type of administrator, and then he moved on to Eaton, and now he's in Vandelia Butler. He's done a project with this contractor, both in Eaton and Vandelia Butler. Again, they couldn't have higher recommendations. And I've spoke with Dr. St. Pierre. They're in the process of having a project being done this summer with this contractor, too.
Correct.
So, they all have very positive things to say. Some of the Vandelia and the Carroll, those were under the old compact fluorescent lights and things like that. Actually, the schools are going to the LED lights, like, is what is in our proposal also.
Right.
So, like I said, I wanted to review the financial side of that with the finance committee, assuming that's fine, and we've got some finishing work on the proposal itself to go through with the contractor, and then I'd have something before council at the July meeting.
Okay, great.
My timeline.
Great.
Thanks for the update.
Tony Lee?
I don't have anything new.
Tom?
Other than, maybe just to remind people that the Parks District does have music in the park one Wednesday night, or Wednesday or Thursday night.
I think it's Thursday night.
Thursday night.
Yeah.
Check your Park District mailer. But they, I think it's three programs this summer, nice music programs, so.
Tom?
That involves the community.
Only thing I was going to bring up is that I work during the day off of Woodman Drive and come up six seventy-five in the evenings. And every time, you get off at six seventy-five in Wilmington, there's traffic all backed up, and there's a lot of stop-and-go and people breaking on the right-hand lane as well as the middle lane, people trying to get over at the last minute. So I contacted the Ohio Department of Transportation and said, hey, are you guys going to do anything? Because now we've got this construction at Cornerstone Development, and there's going to be even more traffic coming through there. Right now, there's two lanes that go left on Wilmington Pike and one lane that goes right. You know, can you do something to either extend the exit ramp or provide an extra lane or something like that? And I was surprised they wrote me back right away and said that they had contacted the right people in District Seven of the Ohio Department of Transportation, and that they're currently working on an improvement, I guess, to Wilmington Pike and that bridge that six seventy-five goes over top of Wilmington Pike. And so once they get that all squared away, then the traffic will hopefully move through there a lot quicker. And then they said that they would reevaluate that exit after that construction is complete. And they said that that construction is supposed to be completed by October of this year. So, I just thought I'd pass along.
And I think that's, there's the construction north on Wilmington that's undergoing right now, where they're widening that by the Costco, and then they're actually going to be doing something under that bridge to make the queuing lanes, I think, longer, so that as you're trying to get on to seventy-five north or south, and I don't know, I haven't seen the plans, I don't know exactly what they're doing, but they're trying to make it so that they can stage more cars, and then they can change the signal timing to allow more cars and.
Right, to have it flow better.
Right, flow better.
The timing is really bad.
Really bad. I just thought that would pass along.
Thank you.
Mr. Sweller?
Mayor, nothing for this evening.
I just have a couple of things. I would like to wish Bob Reed, Bob Reed's, hopefully he'll get well soon. Bob had a stroke and is in Kettering Hospital. He's been there now, I think, a week or so. It looks like it's going to be, there's no paralysis, but I think he's going to be able to make a recovery. So if you know Bob Reed, please say hi, and hopefully he'll get well soon. The only other thing was, the Hope Taff and the Little Miami River Cleaners had their annual river cleanup of the Little Miami River. It was a big success this year. Vectren had a group of eight canoes that cleaned up a section from essentially Roxanna New Burlington all the way to Corwin. And I know, I'm not sure how many tires, I know we had over twenty tires that we pulled out in our group, so. And then afterwards, they had the celebration launch and everything over in Belrock Park. So if you saw that the road was closed, that was for all the volunteers that cleaned everything, essentially the whole river in Green County. So, I'd like to thank them for organizing it. It was a great event, as usual, and it's a great committee that puts that on. And that's all I have.
Also, Mike Puckett, who is the interim city manager, he also suffered a stroke here in the last couple of weeks. He was at Miami Valley Hospital for a period of time, but now he is back home in the rehabilitation process. So, I know our thoughts go out to Mr. Puckett. I know he served a very important role here.
Transitional role and did a great job.
In the transition, but that's all I have.
Anyone from our audience this evening? Seeing none, does any member on council have any other business to come before us this meeting? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.